Good evening, welcome to the Dana Point City Council Meeting of Tuesday, September 18th, 2018. Madam Clerk, will you please provide the roll call?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All members of the council are present with the exception of Councilmember Tomlinson at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney, is there a need for a closed session?
Yes, there is. We have a public performance evaluation, Government Code, Section 54957, Title City Attorney.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else that we need to do?
Yes, we have to add an urgency item to the consent calendar. It's number, it will be number 11A. This item came to the attention of staff after the posting of the agenda, and there is an immediate need to take action. The title of that item will be Request for the City Council to Appoint a Hearing Officer to Consider Public Nuisance Abatement Proceedings Related to an Active Code Enforcement Case at 34466 and 34468 Via Verde, and we will need a unanimous vote to put that matter on the agenda.
Okay.
Move down.
I didn't, I'm not sure I recognize this.
Second.
Okay.
Wait, I wanted a second.
We have a motion in a second. Very well, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. Okay, thank you very much. With that, we are in recess until 6:00 PM. Good evening, welcome to the Dana Point City Council Meeting of September 18th, 2018. We'll now reconvene our meeting, and we will start tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Paul Wyatt.
Would you please stand, place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me? Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please remain standing for the invocation, which this evening will be provided by VFW Post 9934 Chaplain Maury Hanson.
Cover please. Father, we thank you for each and every day you have blessed us, blessed us here in Dana Point. We thank you for your tender mercies, and we thank you for giving us friends and family to share our joys and even our sorrows. I ask you to bless our friends, relatives, brothers and sisters, our city council, our staff, our first responders, all those that make this city so complete. Where there is joy, give them continued joy. Where there is pain or sorrow, give them peace, give them mercy. Where there is self-doubt, release and renew confidence. Where there is a need, fulfill their needs. Bless our homes, families, finances, disgoings and comings in this city. And we want to remind ourselves of that though, we are brothers and sisters. And as we go about our political games and our political futures here in America, we have so much in our senate and our congress. Let us keep it. Well, we love one another, no matter what the situation is. We may disagree on the politicals, but we love one another because we're humans and we love by the grace of God. Thank you. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Please be seated. Come to the Presentations and Proclamations portion of our agenda. The first presentation we have tonight is a resolution presented by Senator Pat Bates, or Representative, oh, thank you. Senator Bates, would you please come up?
Well, thank you. It's a joy to be here, you guys. When I come home from Sacramento, I always say, "It's so much better to be home with friends than walk on the halls up there," which sometimes what Murray said, we forget that we are all one family. So, it's great to join you today. I have a few remarks to make before I actually do the presentation. Would I make that to you, Mayor Visser?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so we'll have you come down, but I just wanted to share some thoughts that were provided, actually with a little research from your Public Information Officer. So, it starts out, "Thank you for the opportunity to join you today to recognize California Surfing Day. Surfing has developed a broad-based culture that's shaped by an industry that started and flourished here in Dana Point. For example, the legendary Killer Dana Wave rolled into Dana Cove when the surf was up, creating waves over ten feet. That was how Killer Dana's thick, right-breaking curl earned its nickname. And Doheny, of course, is called DoHo in local slang, is one of the best places on the west coast to learn how to surf. It even gets referenced in iconic beach boy songs and has nearly a century of surfing history in its waters. Dana Point even had a surf mafia. This was a group of surfers who turned their love of surfing into an industry and a culture, and we see the fruits of their endeavors today. Two examples are Surfer Magazine, that was born in Dana Point, and the production of Endless Summer, the most iconic film in surfing that also took place here. John Van Hemmersfeld, a surfer studying graphic design, created the iconic movie poster at his kitchen table right here in Dana Point. There are depicted a picture taken at the city's own Salt Creek Beach. Then there is, of course, Hobie, named for its creator, Hobie Alter, an icon in the surfing industry. From balsa to foam to the first surf shop to make and sell boards, to the Hobie Cat and more, Hobie happened right here in Dana Point. Our region still remains a hotbed for surfing talent, so we are thrilled to be celebrating California Surfing Day and all those who love the sport of kings right here in beautiful Dana Point. I want to thank you all for your love of surfing. It's incredible that it's now become the state sport, and it's going to be in the Olympics, as you know, in 2020, and would that be exciting to watch. So I do have a reso that will hang proudly, I hope, here. Mayor, you want to come down, and I'm just gonna read, the whereas's are a little dry. I think that the history was much better, but there's a couple of paragraphs that I think are important. It says, "Whereas California Surfing Day was adopted by surfers of all ages in the city of Huntington Beach to unify surfers throughout the state of California and from around the world to celebrate one very special day in honor of the California surfing lifestyle, resolved by Senator Patricia Bates and Assemblymember William Bro, a former mayor/council member. He was not able to be here this evening, but this is from both of us, that recognize September 20th, that'll be Thursday, 2018, as California Surfing Day in Dana Point in celebration of the California surfing lifestyle, commending all those who honor the history, culture and future of surfing, the great sport of surfing and the protection of California's beach and ocean environments while supporting and educating future surfers and potential surfing Olympians. So it's my pleasure on this day to present this to you, Mayor."
Thank you so much, Senator. We are really appreciative, and we're really honored that you would come here today to make this presentation to us. Surfing is such a big part of our heritage, and it means so much for you to come here and have to stay recognized at surfing day such as this. So, thank you very much. Perhaps we can get a picture with the...
Absolutely.
Now, at this time, we have a presentation from our VFW post that I'd like to introduce a couple gentlemen that are here, and I'm really proud to do this again. I'm gonna simply wear my mayor's hat today, although I am a member of VFW Post 9934 and a proud member, and it really makes me proud because of the award that we were given this year that we're about to have the presentation on. It seems like we do many of these awards, but it's really a testament and tribute to the gentlemen and ladies who are members of both our post and our Ladies Auxiliary, and all the work that they do for our community. So, we are really appreciative of our VFW Post 9934. So now, what I'd like to do is introduce Mr. Earl Falk from our, actually a member of National, but also a proud member of our local VFW Post 9934. And if I could ask our Commander Wayne Yost to join me here as well to make a special presentation, I will...
Can we have Renee, certainly?
Certainly. Renee, representing our Ladies Auxiliary, thank you for being here.
Marcia.
And Marcia is the representative of District 2. Marcia, cool, if you'd join us up here as well. And we'd also like to ask Bill Manis, our founder of our post, to come up and join us. With that, I will turn it over to Earl Falk to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. I am Earl Falk. I'm a National Councilmember from the Department of California. I'm one of 53 that handle all the business for our national organization. And for those of you who do not know, we have roughly 6,500 posts. They extend everywhere from Europe to our 50 states, to the Philippines, and so on. Last year, I knew about this before Wayne and the rest of the post did, because I got a call from the past State Commander from the Department of California, and he said, "Not only do you, as a post, do wonderful work, but you have an outstanding city that stands behind you and that gets involved in what the Veterans of Foreign Wars is trying to accomplish for their veterans and their families." So, with that, I just want everybody to remember, we will graciously accept this and post this in our appropriate place, but the city of Dana Point certainly shares this award with us, because the national organization recognizes, no post is an island. And if you do not have a strong city that's behind you and then helps you, you're going nowhere and nowhere fast. And Mayor, this city has just been wonderful to this post. With that, this honor is given to very, very few posts. I believe, if I have my math correct, I think about 10 other posts out of 6,300 got this same award. So, you understand, this is quite something. We hope it happens again, but because we're constantly doing good, strong work with the help of our auxiliary, and hopefully we'll be back here again. So with that, if I could ask you to hold the mic, I'm going to present this to the post Commander Wayne Yost. Wayne, from a grateful national organization, for the 2018 year, you have the National Outstanding Community Services Award for a post that's gone above and beyond the call of duty. And I'm extremely proud to be a member, but I'm extremely proud of all of our post members and this great city of Dana Point. Thank you. Congratulations.
Bravo.
Thank you, Earl, and Mayor Visser. This award is really an award for our community. Yes, we do a lot in the community, and we're proud of it, but without the support of our city council, our administrative staff, our law enforcement, and the wonderful members of our community that give us so much support, and virtually anything that we ask for, they're there for us. We couldn't do any of this without that support, so this award is for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, both the presentation, Senator Bates, and to our VFW Post 9934. Really proud having you as our local post. We'll now move on to the reading of ordinance titles. At this time, the city clerk will read the titles of the ordinances listed on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we have one title to read. It is a first reading and an introduction. It's item number 12 of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Dana Point, California Approving Zone Text Amendment, ZTA 18-0001, to modify and add various provisions to the zoning ordinance, and submission as part of a local coastal program amendment, LCPA 18-0001, for approval and certification by the California Coastal Commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council, the public, or staff request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Madam Clerk, do we have any items to be removed by the public?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. City Manager, do we have any items to be removed by staff?
No, sir.
Do we have any items to be removed by council?
No, sir.
Seeing none, I will move the recommended actions on the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion in a second. Without any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, on the item that was added just before closed session, I'd like to abstain from that.
On item number 11, correct?
Yes, sir.
11A, excuse me. 11A, to be clear. An abstention. Madam Clerk, please note an abstention on item 11A.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the public comments portion of the agenda. There will be a three-minute time limit per person, and an overall time limit of 30 minutes for the public comments portion of the agenda. At the mayor's discretion, the balance of public comments will be heard after the new business portion of the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council and shall not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional, courteous decorum during their comments. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. The city clerk will distribute any handouts you may have, and if you would, please state your name and your city of residence for the record. And I see we have two requests to speak tonight on public comments, is that correct, Madam Clerk? Very well. The first speaker tonight is Bev Jorgensen, followed by Daniel Ritz.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to actually invite you all to the, I'm sorry, my little southern accent came out in the mouth that time, to the car show on Sunday, September 23rd, in the Lantern District. It is called the Lantern District Classic Car and Motorcycle Show from 10 to 3 on Del Prado. We've incorporated a kid's zone that will be in the parking lot of the post office. So we'll have activities for the entire family, so the guys can look at the cars, the wife and the kids can come and play in the kid's zone and have an opportunity to enjoy all the amenities of the businesses that are on Del Prado. So, have a flyer here, like, I know the mayor is coming, and thank you to the VFW for, they're gonna be doing the color guard. So, thank you. Hope everyone will come out and enjoy a great day in the Lantern District. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the next speaker is Daniel Ritz.
How's everybody? Council, staff, public. I just thought this would be a good forum to introduce, starting this Friday, one of our commissioners, the Arts and Culture Commissioner, Anthony Small, will be in a new featured column in your Dana Point Times. He's gonna be examining and expressing his interest in the arts and the intersection of the city and government, and how those roles have evolved and changed, and how present they are in the modern day. So I would encourage everybody to check it out.
Thank you very much. With that, I will close the public comments and move to the council reports portion of the agenda. With that, I'll go around the horn. Councilwoman Tomlinson?
Yes, I have one meeting report. I had a coastal CASA meeting yesterday, quarterly meeting, and that is all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Wyatt?
I have turned in my meeting report to the city clerk. I would like just one comment. I was involved in and assisted with the Tall Ships Festival that was last weekend, but more importantly, the Ocean Institute Board Meeting on Wednesday. Got some preliminary data back in terms of attendance and money and some donations. I will let the Ocean Institute do a press release on some of the various events, but an all-time attendance high, an all-time amount of revenue taken in, and a couple of significant donations that will change the, some of the structures at the Ocean Institute into some new types of programs, and add some additional robotics and other things to the program. So some very terrific things are happening there. It seems to be on the right foot, so I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Lewis?
Thank you. I have turned in my meeting reports. Also, I would just like to say that, thank you to the Orange County Fire Authority for its moving 9/11 memorial that many of us attended. And it's hard to believe it's been that long, but at the same time, it seems like it was just yesterday. So, I just want to say thank you. It was very moving, and sorry to have lost those people, but we were pleased to be able to remember them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protown Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Lewis kind of stole my thunder there a little bit. I was actually privileged enough to be able to speak at that ceremony. It was very moving, and when we look back, it's been 17 years. It's hard to imagine it's been that long, but it's still so clear in so many of our minds. So, that's what I was going to report, and she covered the rest of it very well. So, I will turn in my list of meetings.
Thank you. And I've turned in my list of meetings to the clerk already. So with that, we will move to the next portion of the agenda, which is the public hearings portion. So, item 12 on the agenda is the 2018 Zoning Ordinance Cleanup, or the Local Coastal Program Amendment, and Zone Text Amendment. Mr. City Attorney, do we have a staff report?
City manager.
City manager? Did I call you city attorney?
You did.
I apologize.
I am definitely not a attorney.
Let me try it again. Mr. City Manager?
That's it. Perfect.
Do we have a staff report?
Yes, sir. Senior Planner Sean Nicholas has your staff report tonight. He's done most of the work on this one. Sean?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Mayor, it's your member Sean Nicholas, private planner. Probably help if I turn the mic on. There we go. This item for you this evening is the 2018 Zoning Ordinance Cleanup. As with last year's zoning ordinance cleanup, these processes help us make sure our requirements are accurate, relevant and clear, and compliant with state law. Planning Commission has already reviewed these items before you this evening on two separate occasions, at a public study session on June 25th of this year, and then a public hearing on August 13th. Based on discussion at both of those meetings, staff is going to focus on landscape requirements, alcoholic beverage manufacturing, and Doheny Village for the rest of this presentation. So, associated with landscaping modifications, the key thing I wanted to highlight here has to do with the definition to landscaping, with the key addition being what's called zeriscap, or drought-tolerant landscape design. That's the formal term for that type of landscape architecture, and just that this is an allowed form of landscaping here within the city of Dana Point. The next point here I'd like to highlight is the addition of the front yard setback minimum landscape coverage. And I just want to highlight that a lot of this came out of discussions in the 2017 zoning ordinance cleanup through the process. I want to point out that the overall minimum landscape coverage for the entire lot is not being modified with this. It's just requiring 35% of the front yard to be landscaped. I find it's easier to understand this in a graphical form, so I prepared just two quick images. I have taken an example from our basic, single-family zoning district, RSF 7, and a standard-sized lot that we have throughout the community, 50 by 100. And how it is required today, you take the 5,000-square-foot lot, multiply it by the 25%, and you get 1,250 square feet of landscaping to be installed anywhere on the lot. That can be in the front, side, rear. It can be placed anywhere as long as you have that minimum area. Now, with these changes, it will require 35% of that front yard setback area. So, the front yard setback, a majority of our, I would say, in a large number of our residential zoning districts is 20 feet, as you can see depicted here. Across the 50 feet wide of the lot, you get 1,000 square feet of front yard area. 35% of that is 350 square feet. So, here shows that 350 square feet approximately in that front yard setback, and then it doesn't impact the total lot landscape coverage, which is that 1,250 square feet. But after you take into consideration the front yard setback landscape requirement, only 900 square feet in this example would be required, and again, could be placed anywhere on the lot. And this is going to be accomplished in a variety of ways. In the top-left corner, you can see the, what you could argue is the typical front grass lawn with lush landscaping. And also, what has become more and more popular and is codified with this change, that zeriscap, utilizing plant materials like DG or decomposed granite, succulents, you can see here native grasses in this example down here, and willow trees, again, low-water utilization plants, and oftentimes you see decorative concrete also incorporated, associated with this to create a nice entry feature. The next item has to do with alcoholic beverage manufacturing uses. It's become a new industry that's become very popular. Staff has received several requests to establish these types of uses within our community over the last few years, and so we thought best to codify requirements. It has been determined that the minor conditional use permit would be the appropriate mechanism to allow this to occur. This is the same mechanism that we utilize for all alcohol beverage requests in the community, so it's consistent with that, except in our industrial zone area, it would be allowed by right, subject obviously to the development standards that would be potentially approved here this evening. And those development standards were developed, looking at primarily three jurisdictions, the county and city of San Diego, as well as the city of Anaheim. Those were selected because they have been very successful, and in the planning world has been on the forefront in terms of regulating successfully those types of uses while allowing them to succeed in their communities. And staff has looked at parking for these based on existing parking standards located already within our Dana Point zoning code. Lastly here, touching on the Doheny Village, the modifications proposed to you this evening come directly from the March 20th city council meeting, in which city council requested staff to develop a streamline and create a flexibility for potential, to promote reinvestment and improvements in the Doheny Village area. Staff proposes with that the removal of one-time expansion and limitation, removal of the one-time expansion limitation, as well as an increase in allowed voluntary demolition of 50% to 75%. As council is aware of, many of the structures and uses that are existing down at Doheny Village are considered non-conforming by the current code. So this will allow, again, more flexibility, that if someone's already done improvements, they can do additional improvements and have more flexibility in terms of how much they can demolish, in terms of incorporating those improvements into their businesses or homes. It's important to note, though, those improvements that are done have to meet current code requirements, including building and flood zone requirements. Those are state regulations. We can't reduce or have any flexibility in those, so it's just important, anything that they will do has to meet current standards. Lastly, I just wanted to highlight that the city council requested staff bring back a department Lastly, I just wanted to highlight that the city council requested staff bring back a department policy regarding yearly zoning ordinance updates. So this language that was provided to you in your staff reports this evening will be, if approved, will be incorporated into a department policy for the community development. And just as a calendar year, we will continue to bring these forward. Or if for some reason, staff feels that a zoning ordinance update, for whatever reason, is not necessary that year, we will report out through the development update report. So there is a process in there stated in place to provide an update to council as to what's going on with this every year. So just in conclusion, again, one of the main goals of this modification, this update I found was, had to do with clarity, helping to make it easier for the public to utilize our zoning ordinance here in the city of Dana Point. As noted before, Planning Commission did review this and does recommend on a five oh vote to approve the two thousand and eight code cleanup. And staff does recommend the city council adopt the draft resolution, taking two actions this evening, I'm sorry. Which first would be the city council adoption of a draft resolution, which would approve the LCPA, and that would direct staff to submit this modification to the California Coastal Commission. And then secondly, to conduct the first reading of the draft ordinance provided to you this evening. And that concludes staff's presentation on the items. Staff is prepared to address any of the council members' questions.
Thank you very much. Let's have a round of questions. Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, staff. That was a great report, very concise and very informative. I do have one question on Doheny Village. How much is that in the flood plain? Is the whole Doheny Village down there in the flood plain? Because speaking with people that have been around a few years, I think the last flood event was in like, what, nineteen fourteen or something like that? And what is, I don't think it's very likely now we're going to have a flood down there because of all the improvements to the San Juan Creek Channel. Just in, for my information, thank you.
I can't give an exact percentage, but I would estimate it's less than fifty percent. And it's primarily closer to the railroad tracks is the flood zone. And under the proposed changes, they would still have to comply with all flood plain regulations. This would just be an additional tool they could use.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Wyatt?
Two things. I noted and read that the, these Doheny Village changes, they sunset in a few years. That's correct. This is to take advantage of a near-term attempt to get things, some revitalization underway. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
And also noted on the, on the alcoholic beverage manufacturer, when those are operated, the portions of those operated as a restaurant fall into the same rules as any other restaurant. So I understood. That's correct?
That's correct, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Okay, could you walk me through the whole landscaping front yard? Because I guess what I should ask first is, can somebody have a front yard and some portion of it be completely unlandscaped and then they'll meet the percentage?
Under the current regulations, that could be the case because it doesn't mandate where the landscaping is provided. And so you could meet the twenty-five percent minimum requirement, but have it all provided in the rear of your property. With the update, it would prescribe that a portion, thirty-five percent of the front yard be landscaped.
And how do we get to thirty-five percent of the front yard? So the rest of it can just still be dirt?
Oftentimes, it's walkways, it's driveways, things of that nature. So it's meant to take, looking at this in terms of providing opportunity to have landscaping, but recognizing that there's other areas in the front yard that take up, it could be a potentially significant amount of that space. So we tried to find something that could be attained to provide some landscaping and take into account those other uses in the front yard.
But if there's no hardscaping, it's just dirt, they're still just required to landscape thirty-five percent of dirt? Is that how I read it or is that wrong?
If there's no other improvements in the front yard area, whatever, if approved, then yes, then thirty-five percent of the front yard area would have to then be, if they were doing some kind of improvements or something else that would trigger that they would have to update it, yes, they would have to then at minimum landscape thirty-five percent of their front yard area.
I asked this because this whole front yard thing has come about because there are, there were resident complaints that there were front yards that were just dirt. And that the prior code said it had to blow around and become a nuisance before it would violate our code. And so my understanding was the thought was we were going to have, front yards have to have either hardscape and the rest of it landscaped or all landscaped. But here I'm hearing that we've picked thirty-five percent of the front yard has to be landscaped, but there's no requirement that something has to be done with a hundred percent of the front yard, either hardscape, landscape, combination. And I just want to make sure I'm getting that right.
Potentially, yes. If it's, if there, if it's, if it's an existing lot. But typically, this will be triggered if some kind of new development or something's occurring, which would then usually mean walkways, driveways would be installed because it has to do with, you know, our residential areas in terms of installing this. So that's what, when triggering it, that's what would be needed to meet, if approved, the requirement. And it was based off of evaluating other jurisdictions and looking at, again, as we said earlier, a way in which creating a goal that citizens could make sure that they're in compliance with the zoning ordinance. And that's how we came to that conclusion.
Okay, so when you looked at other ordinances from other cities, did they deal with lots in place? Not new, but lots in place that were unlandscaped, basically unimproved at all? And are we talking about what to do with an in-place, unimproved front yard?
I would say that the, as shown, is consistent with what other communities that we saw in terms of setup is just part of the development standards in the residential zone.
Okay.
Could I just add that, in addition to the zoning ordinance update, we have other provisions in the municipal code that require you to meet minimum development standards. And so with the addition of this update, we could apply it to existing conditions. It wouldn't only apply to new development, which I think is the question, or at least I was understanding you to ask.
Yeah, so walk me through the example because I'm just trying to address residents who are saying there's unlandscaped areas and they're, they're a problem for them, but not such a problem that they're blowing debris and things like that around. And my understanding was that was going to be part of the, no pun intended, cleanup of the zoning code. And it doesn't seem like that would clean up that because they wouldn't, they wouldn't be putting in hardscape. It's already a piece of dirt and they don't want to do anything with it. It's been dirt for years. But they'll put a few plants on thirty-five percent on the front and call it, call it compliance? Or is there something else we can, we can use?
And so as I indicated, there is another provision. It's in the municipal code, which requires you to maintain the minimum standards. It applies to more than just landscaping, parking lots, sidewalks, et cetera. And so right now, the minimum standard is twenty-five percent and it doesn't prescribe where. With the update, it would prescribe that at least thirty-five percent is in the front yard. So in a condition, an existing condition where there is no landscaping and we received a complaint, we could follow up on that and request that at least thirty-five percent be landscaped.
Okay. Okay, then park, parking stalls. Where was that? Oh, I guess that was the alcoholic beverage manufacturing parking stalls? Is that part of, in response, planning updated the parking requirements? Okay, so like Town Center Plan has parking requirements. Are these parking requirements in, consistent with whatever plans are already in place? Or would they compete with, let's say, the Town Center Plan?
Councilmember Lewis, what page are you referring to?
I'm on page three, where it says in response to comments, staff received at the Planning Commission, staff updated the required parking requirements.
And is that in, in the provided materials as well?
I'm on this page three.
Just to make clear, everybody's on the same page. I think she's referring, are you saying page three of the staff report?
Yeah.
So if you go to item twelve, turn one page, basically, you'll be on page three of the staff report. And maybe, it says table one, proposed parking requirements. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, and I'm just clarifying because we're talking about updating required parking requirements. So, you know, I just want to know how that fits in with requirements that are in place in, say, a specific plan like Town Center Plan and our zoning. How does that change our parking?
So as part of the update, the council's being asked to approve a new use, that new use being alcohol beverage manufacturing use.
Right.
We're applying existing parking regulations, though. And so for the manufacturing portion of alcohol manufacturing facility, they would be subject to our existing manufacturing parking ratio. And for the non-manufacturing area, it would be consistent with our restaurant standards. So we're not proposing any changes to the parking standards themselves. We're utilizing the existing standards.
Okay, so how are we updating the required parking requirements? Just we're saying it now applies to alcohol manufacturing. This is like a new category?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So my last question then is, I'm now on page four of the staff report. Adaptive parking regulations. So this seems to be, it says, I'll read it for the benefit of people out there who don't have this. At the August thirteen, twenty eighteen Planning Commission hearing, the commission requested that planning staff evaluate adaptive parking strategies as part of the next zoning ordinance cleanup. Adaptive parking generally looks to incorporate flexibility into parking standards and take into consideration multimodal transit options. So explain to me how this is part of a cleanup versus this should be something that we look at as part of possibly amending the zoning code?
And so this has been a phased approach. This is phase two, our second year of the update. So the strategy has been to start with what we've commonly referred to as the lowest hanging fruit. And so last year, we focused on a number of just basic definition cleanups, et cetera. We've progressed into a little bit more complicated, but still what we've described as somewhat low-hanging fruit in this cleanup. And understanding that we've eliminated a lot of those issues, the commission, I think, was just simply saying, as we move into more complex issues, this is one of the issues we're recommending be included in the next cleanup effort.
Okay, so that isn't part of what we're voting on. We're just saying we want to start evaluating?
That's correct. They're simply recommending it's something to focus on in the next update cycle.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. That's what it sounded like, but, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protown Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to move back to this landscaping thing because Councilmember Lewis brought up something that was interesting to me. As you know, most people realize I'm a private property owners rights advocate. I didn't really have a problem with this because we were sticking with the twenty-five percent, just mandating that the thirty-five percent of that front setback be included in the twenty-five percent. And that the actual number doesn't increase. Help me understand what you just said, that if we do this and we have an existing property that doesn't have any landscaping in their front yard, we could go back and require that they landscape it? Is that what you were saying?
It would be twofold. So one, they'd have to provide a minimum of twenty-five percent.
Correct.
And if there's absolutely no landscaping in the front portion, there are provisions, it's in the public nuisance code, in which we could issue violations and they're not meeting the minimum standards.
So, so this one kind of bothers me because now we're taking an existing property and changing the code and then forcing them to comply. However, at the same time, with the Doheny Village code update, we're saying you're non-conforming and we're relaxing the codes. So you can do, you can do more improvements to your property while we're working on the zoning change down there. This is very duplicitous to me. I don't, I'm not comfortable going to a property that currently doesn't have the landscaping in the front yard, changing my zoning code and now saying, now you have to landscape it. I don't know if that, if we should be doing that. I don't know. I mean, this one, that almost sounds like, you know, we grandfather certain, certain parts of the city in, especially for industrial development, when we change our zones, you get grandfathered in unless you change something, then you have to come up to compliance. This sounds like we're not going to offer that. And I don't know if that's true or not, but I understand the concern about this. I don't really have a problem with it, other than the fact I don't know that I'm okay with going to people right now and saying, even if you have the twenty-five percent somewhere else on your property, now we're going to require you to do something in your front yard. Do you understand what I'm saying?
That's only when they do some sort of change.
No, I don't believe so. I think, I don't think that's how this, how they're writing this. That's my question. If there's a change, if they do some development on the property, yeah, okay, I get that. But this sounds like it could just be a property owner sitting out there today, happy, no landscaping in their front yard, and this goes through and in thirty days, we have the second reading on it. The next day, they can be hit with a code violation and require them to do landscaping.
So the, the existing provision about meeting standards, that's, that's existing policy. And so by establishing a new standard, our code enforcement is.
I understand that. I understand that. But that's not what I'm hearing here tonight. Mister City Manager or City Attorney, chime in on this for me if you would. I mean, just be misunderstanding that. What I just heard tonight was that we could do a code violation to an existing property after we make this change to the code here that didn't exist, doesn't exist today, won't exist for thirty days even if we approve it tonight. So is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
My question is, if you establish this zoning code tonight, tonight and in thirty days when it goes into effect,
Correct.
the very next day, a homeowner that's sitting there with no landscaping in their front yard would then be required that day to put thirty-five percent of their setback, landscape thirty-five percent of their setback?
It would be required.
No matter what. I could come in the next day, we could have our code enforcement drive around the entire city and say, you know what, you don't have any landscaping in your front yard. Now you have to do it. So we're going to require.
It would be out of compliance. It could be deemed a nuisance.
Okay, I'm just going to say I don't agree with this. So that piece of it, I'm going to have an issue with. We need to work on that. I have a problem telling people just out of the blue, hey, now you have to landscape. Some people may not be able to afford to landscape it. I don't know why there's no landscaping in their front yard, but there could be a cost involved in that. I don't know if it's the right thing to just walk up and code violate you over that. I don't know how many of these properties exist and what we're talking about, but I think we need to work on this and make sure that we have an accommodation for people in an existing situation. Because I, you know, it just, that feels wrong to me. So that being said, okay, I've done with that now. And if we move forward, I'll make a motion not to do this, but I haven't done it yet. I will when I get done. But I do want to commend staff on what they're doing in Doheny Village with the update down there because I think this is important. I worked, I went down and spoke with the merchants a couple, merchants a couple of times, the association. They expressed to me what their real concerns were. This had started with form-based code. And then after we peeled that away, we finally got down to what their real concerns were. I came back to staff and I said, you need to go down and work with the merchants, take into consideration how long they've been there, what type of businesses they have, what their plans are for the future, and let's make sure we can accommodate them. So I really, I say kudos to you on this. But there's one thing that I would like to bring up. Now that we've gone through the zoning and tried to help them out with their, with their development or their improvement process, the next step, I think, is we need to start looking for beautification opportunities in Doheny Village. And I'd like, I'd like to direct staff to get out there and start finding ways that we can do some of that down there as well and not just worry about the, the development aspect of it, but the beautification of it as well. With that, I'm going to make a motion to.
Hang on one second if you would. We're still in the portion where we're asking questions. We're then going to open the public hearing. We'll hear comments and then we'll bring it back to council.
Okay, I'm done.
For emotions.
Thanks.
Okay.
I know, I get excited. It's only six fifty and we're almost done. It's only six fifty and we're almost done.
Okay. So, okay, well, with that, and I'm sure it sounds like we're gonna have a lot more discussion then once we get back to the council portion, why don't I open the public hearing?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have one more question.
You have one more question?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Um, back on the same subject with the landscaping. So when we looked at the old code, there was a provision in there that said if the front, if the yard wasn't landscaped, but it had to then create some sort of nuisance to be a code violation, is my understanding, was that correct?
That's correct. There's, you know, there's roughly twenty different categories that are deemed nuisances. There's one particular for landscaping, which has the added provision that it's causing an impact from dust.
Right. So when we last all talked, the code cleanup was just gonna take that that out. That was my understanding. Are we taking that out? Is that still in?
I'm basing this off of memory because that was on the original code update, so it was over a year ago. But it was discussed, but it ultimately wasn't supported by the Planning Commission, so it didn't go forward with last year's update. And then we looked at the issue again in this update, knowing that it was an outstanding issue, and that's where this thirty-five percent model that we're bringing forward came about.
Okay, so this is still keeping in then the thirty-five percent and the nuisance requirement?
It it doesn't change that one provision that requires there to be the additional impact with dust.
Okay, so it's both actually now, the thirty-five percent, but it also ha- it also has to create some sort of nuisance with dust. I'm I'm hearing that those are both part of this code now.
One is existing, the nuisance provision-
Yeah.
That requires, and then it would be the addition of the thirty-five percent.
Right, and the nuisance provision isn't being taken out, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, so I too have a problem.
Okay, thank you. So with that, let's open the public hearing and hear any public comments. Madam Clerk, I have one public comment, is that correct? The speaker is Bev Jorgensen.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of staff. Bev Jorgensen, Executive Director of the Dana Point Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the Dana Point Chamber of Commerce, Board of Directors, our members and their employees, the chamber supports the two thousand eighteen zoning ordinance cleanup in a few areas. One, beer distillery, wine manufacturing, as the goal to clarify requirements has been met as outlined in supporting staff documents. California is the birthplace of American craft brewing movement and at the forefront of the industry's growth. According to the California Brewers Association, more breweries call California home than any other state in the nation. As of December two thousand seventeen, they reported that there were more than nine hundred craft breweries that are in operation across the state. Craft beer enthusiastic play an important role in supporting the economic engine in California. In two thousand sixteen, craft breweries contributed seven point three billion to the state's economy, up from six point five in two thousand fourteen. The industry supports more than forty-nine thousand jobs. I'm sure it's actually more. That was reported last year, so I'm sure it's gone up since then. Secondly, on March twentieth, two thousand eighteen, the City Council approved several actions related to the Doheny Village Update Project. The chamber supported this action and now supports the non-conforming requirements presented in the staff reports, which also noted that the Doheny Village Merchants Association is supportive of those changes. In addition, the chamber supports the allowing of the DG lots for parking in commercial areas, car lifts for the approval of site development permits, and to streamline the review of the approval of master site programs. The goal of the zoning ordinance cleanup is to ensure that the Dana Point zoning codes continues to be accurate, relevant, and clear for residents and those who currently do business in the city of Dana Point and for those looking to do business in our community. The Chamber Board is in full support of the zone code cleanup in the areas that I have mentioned, and thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have any other public comments on this?
No, Mr. Mayor.
In that case, I will close the public hearing and I'll bring it back to council. I believe there was some interest in making a motion.
All right, I'm gonna hold off on my motion right now because you just said something that was different from what I just heard when with Ms. Lewis asked you that question. Yeah, I'm still concerned on this to a certain degree. My concern was that as soon as it passes, we still have to establish nuisance. Is that correct? I know we're not supposed to be asking questions now, but-
No.
But we but we still have to establish nuisance. We just can't say it's a nuisance because it's unlandscaped.
But that's correct. There's a process we go through.
Okay, so this is like anything else. I mean, you have a nuisance, the new zoning codes are X, and even before that, if it was deemed a nuisance, you were going to have to do something to fix it anyway. So if it puts you over the, if your backyard's your twenty-five percent, your front yard's deemed a nuisance, you would still have to come out and mitigate your front yard, mitigate the nuisance, correct? So you could end up over twenty-five percent landscaped.
That's correct.
All right, I'll wait for more discussion.
Okay, you know, well, so we have discussion. I'll I'll make the motion for the recommended action. If there's a second, of course, then we can have discussion on it.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a second now. We can start discussion. Councilmember Tomlinson?
So we're not going to be going out there and saying, okay, we're now under a new zon- zoning ordinance and you have to do thirty-five percent of your front yard? We're not gonna be busting people for that, are we?
That's not the intent, no.
Okay. Because I hate to see us do that, go out there and like, you know, well, your your front yard is not up to code and you have to do it. Because I know a lot of lots in Capistrano Beach where the house sits way back on the lot. So, and they have all different types of landscaping down there, so if we're not going to be calling people out on it and writing zoning violation codes for that, I'm I'm fine with it. But if we're gonna go out there and enforce it and actively enforce it, but it has to be deemed a nuisance first, correct?
That's correct. The tool would be a nuisance.
So that would be if somebody lets their front yard go completely to heck, they don't water it, and it just dies and it becomes a dust bowl, then we we would do something about it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're not, okay, that answers my question, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. Well, okay, now now I need some clarification because we do have properties in the city that are not landscaped or they have various situations. They were not deemed a nuisance because I don't know what the standard was for this dust situation, which is put into the code. So we had we had yards that were simply unimproved, period, but were not deemed a nuisance because they did not meet some standard, which has not really been been incorporated into the code in some objective manner. So I don't know now, it doesn't sound like we're really changing anything because we're leaving in the nuisance requirement, and if it was a nuisance before, they were gonna have to do something. But now it actually sounds like if it's a nuisance, all they have to do is landscape thirty-five percent of it, whereas before, if it was a nuisance, they were gonna have to do whatever it takes to ameliorate the nuisance. So now I'm very confused by what we're doing, and it sounds like we haven't actually done anything to address what the residents were complaining about.
So I think there are multiple provisions in the nuisance ordinance where I think there's some confusion about the two provisions, so that apply in this situation, so might help if I just read them.
Okay.
To help some clarification. So there's one provision under J, which says, building exteriors, roof, landscaping, grounds, walls, retaining crib walls, fences, driveways, parking lots, sidewalks, which are maintained in such a condition to become defective, unsightly, and no longer viable. And then there's a other section, which refers to the accumulation of dirt, litter, no, that's not the right word. Any front yard, parkway, or landscaped setback area which lacks turf or planted material, decorative rock, bark, or planted ground cover or covering so as to cause excessive dust or allow the accumulation of debris. And so under those two provisions, if we were to receive a complaint, we could go out and determine that there's a nuisance situation.
Okay.
And if I may, there's actually another section as well. This is section H of of six point one, four point zero zero two, public nuisances designated. And it's H, no, I, H, and then overgrown, dead, decayed, had or hazardous vegetation, which, one, may harbor rats, vermin, or other disease carriers; two, is maintained so as to cause an obstruction to the vision of motorists or hazardous condition to pedestrians or vehicle traffic; three, constitutes an unsightly appearance; four, creates a danger or attractive nuisance to the public. And so the challenge that I think staff had last year with looking at this section of the code was, while they could certainly declare a nuisance, they couldn't advise the resident what it would take to repair the nuisance. And so what they have sought to do under the zoning code now is to say, if you're found to have a nuisance, now this is how you can fix it, which is thirty-five percent of the front of the home needs to be landscaped with some form, it can be, you know, decomposed granite, xeriscade, drought-tolerant plants, et cetera, et cetera. So the two needed to come together to effectively be able to enforce the nuisance section and have, give the resident a roadmap to success.
So what you're saying is we could give a notice of violation and now we give them a remedy to cure it to bring it back?
Exactly.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay, so here's my issue, being a lawyer and picking things apart. We tell them thirty-five percent, but that does not ameliorate the either excessive dust or unsightly appearance. Where are we? They've complied with the thirty-five percent, but it still doesn't comply with unsightly appearance or accum- excessive dust or allow accumulation of debris.
They still have a nuisance.
They still have a nuisance, okay.
Okay, uh, any other discussion?
I think they, I think they've finally answered my question. So this was really to give them a way to mitigate their nuisance, is what I'm understanding.
Correct.
Okay, and now we also have the definition that it may not mitigate it. They may have to go further, but the minimum is going to be thirty-five percent of the front yard. It's gonna have to be landscaped.
I think we've sussed that up.
Thanks, got it.
Okay.
I'm okay with this.
In light of that, that was a good discussion. Is there anyone else who wants to add anything else before we vote?
No.
Okay, very well, I will call for the vote.
Question, this is a first reading or this is the, okay. I thought so, but I wanted to make sure. Oh, we're not doing yes now.
Okay, the motion passes five to zero.
Mr. Steiner, you're gonna pay on that one tonight, so thank you.
Sorry for the confusion.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on on the agenda, there's no unfinished business. There's no new business. We will move to the staff reports. Mr. City Manager, I'll call you Mr. Denny. You know, it'll be easier for me.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and Council, we did receive the presentation from Senator Bates. The state has declared Thursday, September twentieth, California Surfing Day. In Dana Point, we always celebrate early, so we're getting started tomorrow with a fun event where the Dana Point Surf Club and the Capistrano Valley Boys and Girls Club are going to be meeting on the beach, Doheny State Beach, and taking kids who've never had a chance to go surfing before surfing. And we're partnering up with them. Our trolleys will be going up to the Boys and Girls Club to bring the kids down. I believe the the Boneyard Cafe is providing some snacks and and food for the kids, and so we want to encourage all of you and the rest of the community to come down and and celebrate the state sport of surfing at Doheny tomorrow afternoon from three to five.
Is it free?
It is? Well, unless you park at Doheny, that's, the state will exact their their pennies from you. I also wanted to mention that Wayne Yost and I had a chance to meet last week regarding his comments at your last city council meeting relative to the the stakeholders that are involved in providing services to the homeless and others in need in the community. And so Wayne will be organizing a meeting. I've offered him the use of city facilities for that and pledged the support of our staff and Mercy House, our outreach contractor, to participate to the greatest extent possible. And so as those meetings go forward, you know, we'll keep the council updated, but look forward to continuing to work with our our friends and partners, the award-winning ones especially, here in the community. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam City Attorney, do you have a report?
I don't have anything.
Okay, well, thank you very much. That brings us to the adjournment portion. The next regular meeting of the City Council will be October second, twenty eighteen, at five P M. here in the City Council chambers. We are adjourned.